I'm against that.
It was freezing in there.
I would just, I wouldn't make a recommendation for the rezon, it shouldn't be, it may be more appropriate in a rezon application.
Yeah, it's just, it's just.
More appropriate, same word. Thanks, appreciate it.
The question you ask is if they have a circular rezon application actually, because you can't vary, it's not sound. It changes on its own.
So it's only going to die.
Under the five.
Which still survives.
But they can't develop unless they've got the zone.
I think we'd be more acute if you had. I don't want to show you on court too deep.
Not too late. My, my real stress is that if somebody comes up and says, we've been doing this for ten years, but.
Well, I am an old people back.
But what? I'm not sure. I guess they could, it's still happening, or you could say it's a zone that they can't be developed unless it's.
All right, I show is four thirty. A little hot. Uh, we'll call this, uh, we'll call the city of Bella Vista Board of Zoning Adjustments to Order. Call the board, please.
Ellis?
Here.
Farner?
Here.
Klessen?
Here.
Portillo?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Sedbury?
Here.
Alrighty, we do have, we, tell them to turn it down, would you? We have, we do have a forum. Uh, next on our agenda, we have the consideration of our from October the thirteenth.
So moved.
Uh, motion from Klessen.
Second.
Second from Farner. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, meeting minutes are approved. We have nothing under unfinished business. Next up is new business. We have a public hearing. Arizona variance twenty twenty-five six one nine three eight, a variance request of street buffering and perimeter landscaping. Uh, Planner LaRue.
Good afternoon, board members. Uh, so I will, uh, try and explain this report as succinctly and together as I can, uh, but essentially the applicant is requesting a variance of the street front and buffer, uh, landscaping requirements for both, uh, Forest Hills, Rogers Road, and the, uh, east and south property lines. The applicant is requesting an overall reduction in the number of trees from ninety to fifty-two, um, in favor to preserve an existing tree canopy along the east property line, uh, but, but to also, um, use the existing tree canopy along Forest Hills to meet this, uh, street buffer requirement. Um, staff still had several questions of the landscape plan. Uh, we do need to see a few more details and the plan does need to be stamped by a late, by a licensed architect. Staff does find that not all three review criteria are met. And staff does not find a hardship, uh, that is not of the applicant's doing. Uh, and of course, the, uh, landscape plan still must be approved by a landscape architect. Staff is, uh, staff does not recommend approval at this time.
All right, any questions for staff? All right, see now we'll go ahead and have the applicant come up, state your name, address for the record, and you will have up to fifteen minutes to, uh, state your case.
Sure. Good evening, guys. I'm Dirk Tibido with Swope Consulting. I am a landscape architect. I did draw the plan, so they'll be stamped on the, on the tail. As far as what the requirement is requesting specifically on Forest Hills Boulevard, due to the length of the street, it tells us that we have to have fifteen shade trees, fifteen ornamental trees, and I think a hundred and fifty-four shrubs. What we're not providing on the plan is the fifteen shade trees because they are more than that existing shade trees that we're saving. So for us to put fifteen shade trees, we're really going to be piling trees under and within existing trees. So that's the intent, is that we're not asking for fewer trees. We're just saying, hey, rather than cutting these trees down, let's save these trees and count them, and they're all applicable trees. They're not small trees. They're large, they're thirty-six inch, twenty-four inch oaks and maples. And so there's sixteen of them that are substantial, and that's one more than is with the requirement. So the requirement says we have to have fifteen, we're saying we're going to keep sixteen of the big ones. And then it says we have to have fifteen ornamental, we're providing those. It says we have to have a hundred and fifty-four, uh, shrubs, we're providing those. Um, on the east side, uh, there's an existing grove of trees there, same exact thing. For us to put the required shade trees, we would be putting trees within mature trees. Now, on that one, again, there's not ornamental trees, so I didn't ask to vacate the ordinance completely. I'm just saying there's more than fifteen shade trees already there. Let's count the existing shade trees and we'll add the supplemental. So again, on that side, we're adding the ornamental and we're adding one, that one, it doesn't have a shrub component, so. Does that make sense?
Any questions for, yes, sir.
Uh, is it true that the, uh, trees on the west side are in the highway right of way?
The trees? Sorry, I'm not looking in the plan. Um, would be within. I, I think they are, yes.
Yeah, when, when you ride down there, you can see the trees and there's a fence lined behind.
I think technically they are within the highway right of way.
So you don't have any control if the highway just, people decide they want to take them down?
No.
Okay.
Is, is there room to place the required trees on, behind the highway right of way on the actual project property?
Not unless we remove the trees.
Remove which trees?
The existing trees along the roadway. Again, because they, because they are so large.
Uh huh.
We wouldn't be able to plant a maple underneath the canopy of an existing oak.
Okay.
So the only way to do that would be to remove the trees to allow the new trees to happen. I don't see any reason why the highway department would go in and remove those trees because they're far enough away from the existing roadway and they're outside of the grading.
Do we, do we have anything that depicts where that canopy is at and where these trees are located?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So what we're looking at is, I can see.
See, at, at, looking at that, it shows all the canopies located within the right of way, so there would be room to plant more trees behind them on the actual subject property.
It's, it's a fine line, I'm, it really is. That canopy, as it goes all the way out, for us to clear the existing canopy, we would be placing proposed trees right at or under an existing canopy. And I had no problem with that with ornamentals because that's the intent of the ornamental, is that those canopies slip together. Now, on the other, on the eastern property line, it's, it's not right of way and it's just, it's just a very large canopy that's being maintained. In fact, we kept the pond outside of that tree line to ensure that the grading didn't affect that stance of trees.
Taylor, is there, is there a way around this with the existing stuff to get it shown in such a way where a variance wouldn't be required? Cause, I mean, you know, you know, we typically try to avoid variances.
Um, well, just to, I think a point of clarification, just as I'm listening to the conversation, just to offer, um, the east side technically is not a part of this because of the preservation credits uh, that one oh nine two 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 offers, and they just have to preserve a tree of over so many inches of caliper to get the credit for one along the east border, which, um, we can confirm that they easily meet that on that side. But, um, so the perimeter variance that we're looking at, it's really on the south side. Uh, your street buffer variance is going to be on the west and north. You are correct, the shade trees depicted are in the, are at right of way, so we can't guarantee that they'll be preserved. Um, except with any right of way or easement, correct? So, in terms of designing this in a way that avoids the variance, I'm not sure that I can answer that.
Or I mean, just to, you know, getting credit for preserving trees along the west and the south that would count towards the requirement for, I guess, I, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, well, the trees, yeah. I mean, they are getting the preservation credit for the trees that exist on the east side, um.
There's no request on the south. The south, we are providing the trees that are required.
Okay, so it's just.
The south side requires seven shade trees and seven ornamentals every fifty feet, placed along the ten-foot landscape barrier.
So what we did do is that count is there. They may not be placed at that exact interval, but that southern property line yields the amount of trees that we've placed.
Correct, so a variance on the placement, I believe, is more of what you're asking. You're still providing the number, you're just not meeting the placement requirements.
Correct. So the, and the, and the, the green space is there, the, the trees just aren't right in that tight little ledge.
So the only issue's on the west side?
The issue with the west side would be that the trees that I'm wanting to preserve are in the highway right of way.
So there is no preservation credit being offered for the west side right now?
Okay, but that's where the issue is, the west side.
The variances you are considering right now are on the southwest and north. The west is simply just a variance on shade tree requirements. He's providing ornamentals but no shades. We require twenty-five, or every twenty-five feet, we require a shade tree. He's not providing those. North side, he is providing, um, trees, just not in the placement required. I would defer to him on confirming the calculations. I know some of the shades are also depicted in the legend a little differently than. Typically, shades have the same size, uh, throughout, and then ornamentals are smaller, but I think some of your shades are also shown by a smaller diameter of a tree on the key legend, but.
I'm not sure about that. I do know that when we go to the bottom left, it does show, and, well, what I did try to do is like, if a tree was being used twice, I showed it in the legend twice to show that the, the shade trees along Rogers were being provided and the shade trees along, you know, Forest Hills were being provided. And then as far as the, uh, calculations, the calculations are to the left, I believe, a little bit further down? Down, that's up? Down? All the way? Oh, sorry, I'm, maybe I, maybe they're to the right. There we go. So there's a complete breakdown of what is required and what is being provided, and we're providing more than the requirement in all instances for all, um, perimeter and buffer.
So you're planting the correct amount of shade trees that's required for the perimeter landscaping. It just may not all be along the perimeter, is that what we're stating?
They're along the perimeter, but the perimeter says it's within ten feet. So the trees are in some instances further than ten feet from the property line, just by the nature of the design and how they would be, um, ideally placed. Is it ten feet, is that correct?
For which one?
The perimeter.
Perimeter's every fifty feet. You have to provide a shade and a ornamental every fifty feet.
So is there not a?
He's talking about distance from the property.
Yeah.
Oh, the ten-foot landscape buffer? Yeah, there's three options. I believe that's the one you chose, so.
Yeah, so my trees are outside that ten foot. We're clearly have more than ten foot of green. I just don't have a tree within ten feet of the property line, uh, for lots of different reasons. Um, in some instances, it allowed us to space the trees out a little bit. Um, right there on the corner of the detention pond, I can see the ornamental trees sort of wrapping around. Those fall within that number, so they would be leaving the, the, they'd be further than ten feet from the property line.
Alrighty, any other questions for the applicant? All right, we'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing, uh, so if you would take a seat for just a minute.
Appreciate it.
Um, if there's anybody in the public that would like to address the Board of Zoning Adjustments concerning this request, if you would come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we will give you up to fifteen minutes to, or five minutes, I'm sorry. You weren't moving quite fast enough there. We'll give you up to five minutes to, uh, 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 express your concerns or comments to the, uh, board. With that, the public hearing is open. Alrighty, see, now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, if you'd go ahead and come on back up to the podium. I guess it's back to the board members. Do you have any additional questions, comments?
How far away from those power lines are you staying on Rogers with the trees?
So on Rogers, we're staying twenty feet away, and that, that poses a little bit of a problem as well.
Would that be part of the reason why they're not? I'd rather see them sit further back than see them scalped and.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But overall, we have the, we have the number of shade trees being planted.
Actually, more. We exceed the count.
Exceed?
Exceed.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, the intent wasn't to circumvent the, any rules by any means. It was to take the site and look at the best possible way to provide the requirements of Bella Vista.
Except for the west side, right? Cause I think your calculations included the, the ones within the right of way.
Yes.
That's the only side.
But to me, it's, I would rather see those trees untouched, unlimbed, than try to force trees within mature tree canopies.
Yes, but we can take those shade trees and plant them somewhere else on site, correct?
Yeah, so in theory, yes, we could play, well, I don't know, um, it would be beyond.
Now, I'm.
Do they have to be within the ten feet?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, take those, basically what I, I think, uh, Mr. Sedbury said is we understand that there's some constraints, and we just want to make sure that we're planting new shade trees in the right quantity, even if it doesn't get planted along the road, but find other places on site to.
I agree.
Plant those shade trees.
Yes.
So we need to meet the quantity requirement for the total number of perimeter landscaping trees. They just may not be within that buffer, but as long as they're located on site somewhere.
That would be the fifteen trees. We were talking about fifteen trees.
There would be a compromise of some kind there that might work.
As a condition of approval?
Yes, ma'am. Unless I'm speaking out of turn.
No.
So.
Yeah, I also didn't think that.
That removes the financial part of the conversation. So, any other questions or comments? All right, if I, if not, we, can I get a motion to approve zoning variance twenty twenty-five six one nine three eight with the condition of that the correct number quantity-wise will be planted on site?
So moved.
Got a motion from Portillo?
Second.
Second from Farner. Call the board, please.
Wagner?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you all. We'll see you here in just a minute for our planning commission meeting. All right, next up, we have public hearing, uh, zoning variance twenty twenty-five six two one zero zero, a variance request on a chicken coop placement requirement and fence height restriction. Uh, Planner Grady.
Good evening. This property is located in the southeast area of, uh, Bella Vista. Uh, parcel number sixteen dash four three two zero one zero zero zero, lot two, block one of the Spanker Creek Estate subdivision. Tonight, we're discussing section one oh nine two four eight, uh, B two. Uh, residentially zoned lots less than four acres fences, sorry, fences shall not be taller than three feet in height in the front yard. Section one oh nine one six seven C five, hobby chickens, it's unlawful for any person to keep uh, permit or allow hobby chickens within the corporate limits within permitted districts under the following terms and conditions. Uh, enclosure placement area, hen enclosures shall be kept in the side or rear yard area and not permitted in the front yard. The nature of the request is to place a mobile chicken coop, uh, totaling a hundred and sixty square feet and a five-foot tall fence within the front yard of the residential estate zone property, uh, which is not permitted. Uh, on September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, development compliance found the site had a chicken coop in the front yard. Uh, a notice of violation was sent and compliance was co- uh, confirmed on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, uh, when the coop was removed from the front yard. Uh, at that time, compliance staff found a fence taller than three feet and, uh, that had been built without a permit in the front yard. Uh, a fence application was submitted on October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Staff found it did not meet code since the fence measures five feet in the front yard. The applicant is now seeking a variance for the unpermitted fence and to have a mobile chicken coop, uh, in their front yard. Staff found the lot does, uh, does contain roughly a ten-foot slope in the rear and the northeast side yard, making the far rear portion unsuitable for a coop. Uh, directly east of the house, there is a flat portion which contains a privacy fence, trampoline, and a raised garden bed beside, or, sorry, behind a privacy fence. Uh, directly northwest of the house, in the rear yard, um, it is used for an accessory building, uh, which is relatively the same topography as the front yard. The applicant's, uh, letter mentions animal husbandry, the science of breeding and caring for farm animals. Uh, staff finds this concerning as breeding is not considered hobby chickens and falls outside the intended use. Board of, uh, the Board of Zoning Adjustments is strictly prohibited from granting variances based on use. Um, no public comments, um, were given, uh, or sorry, received at the time of this report. Uh, all legal notices were posted according to the code. Staff does find the request to meet, or I'm sorry, staff does not find the request to meet all required review criteria items and therefore cannot recommend approval of this variance request. Staff does find a rezon request may be more appropriate for the intended use by the applicant.
Alright, any questions for staff? Alrighty, if the applicant's present, would you please come up to the podium and state your name and address, and we'll give you up to fifteen minutes to, uh, make your case for your request.
My name is, uh, Mark Pierce, eighty-two oh six Spanker Ridge Drive, Bendville, Arkansas, is my address. Um, so just for clar- for clarification, the chicken coop, we're not breeding chickens. We're just, we're just raising them for, for eggs. Uh, we're trying to do a chicken tractor where we move the chicken coop every two to three days. The front part of our property is the only flat part of our property where we can move that coop around. It, uh, it's healthier for the chickens. It minimizes waste buildup, so it's cleaner, cleaner environment for them. So the proposed location is kind of the southeast portion of the property, um, not directly in front of the home, but in the front plane of the home. Uh, the fence, uh, is five feet to the top of the post. Uh, we're proposing to do the five-foot fence mainly for, for safety of our kids because of being the front part of our property, being near a busy road. We've got a lot of traffic, a lot of people that park on the road, pull into our driveway, park in our neighbor's driveway and sit, and so it's just more for protection for our family. Um, as well as it meets, meets the aesthetics of, of the surrounding neighborhood. We have neighbors with, uh, taller fences. Uh, being a, a larger property than your typical quarter acre lot in Bella Vista, we feel like that it meets the intent and spirit of, of the code. Um, the wood and rail post fence also allows for, uh, view of the home. It doesn't obstruct view. And so, that's the reason for. We also want to increase the property value by putting a nicer fence, having a shorter fence would, would just wouldn't look right with the, uh, with the neighborhood as well.
Uh, staff makes, uh, mention of maybe a rezoning would take care of this for you where you wouldn't be required to have multiple variances. Have you discussed that with the staff some?
Uh, for the multiple variances within the zoning variance request?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
And about rezoning the property instead of requesting the variances?
I've not discussed that, no.
Okay. Staff is, can you, can you explain, uh, expand on that?
Absolutely. So rezoning to potentially ag would be more fitting for the area and the use that you're requesting, um, considering you've also mentioned wanting additional ag animals. Uh, currently, right now, with residential estate, you're a little, you're a little bit more restricted than what you would in an ag zone. So you'd be required to fill out the application. Um, there would be public notices, similar process to what you have today, but there would also be mailers. Um, I will state that, um, we went out there today to review, to look at the property. Currently, the, uh, chicken coop is up there off to the side area that we had mentioned. Um, and so I do want to make note of that one. Uh, I'm not for sure, do you have any additional questions? Is there anything that you guys would like me to cover that I haven't had yet?
What is a, what is a rezone, how would that rezoning work?
So basically.
If I'm in an RE area with a neigh, like, already a neighborhood zone that way?
Right, so you've got RE residential, but the uses in the area are ag, um, also to the other properties that are going off of the, the previous covenants that you had had when the property was originally created.
Okay.
Um, and so whenever you guys annexed, that went away. And so you, to the south of you is ag uses, to the north of you is residential estate, and so it could be considered possi, as a possibility, according to our master plan.
Okay.
Essentially, staff is saying, instead of requesting variances from your current zoning, it seems like what you're wanting to do is more appropriate in another zone, where variances would not be needed. So instead of asking for variances from this zone, it may be more appropriate to just ask for a different zone that's more aligned with your intent and future plan to your property.
Okay. How would that?
That way you don't need to keep coming back and asking for variances if that truly is the intent of what you're trying to do, you know what I mean? Um, and staff is more than happy to talk to you about that. We can set up a meeting and have an actual pre-op.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's under state statute, like the fence specifically, there's not really a way for us to approve that variance because it's a want, not a, not a hardship per se, just, you know, people want to fence their yard in, but that doesn't mean we can just say, yeah, you can go fence your yard in. Cause once we say, yes, you can go fence your yard in the front, then that means everybody in Bella Vista can do that. And well, that's not our intent as a, as a board to unilaterally grant something without a true hardship. So that's, that's part of it, and there's no, there's no real hardship for a three-foot fence versus a five-foot fence. And the same thing goes with the chicken coop. We have to stay consistent across the whole city. We can't just say, well, they want to have a chicken coop, so we, we'll let them have a chicken coop, then that means everybody can have a chicken coop. And topography is not a great, great use of a hardship because everybody has topography in Bella Vista. But there's a way around there, round that for you by rezoning and you're adjacent to other agricultural zones. That is a, a more fitting legal way to approach this, I believe, Mr. City Attorney.
He definitely, they're shot getting it done.
So how does that?
Standard on variances would be difficult to meet.
Yeah. And basically, you would just withdraw, withdraw your variance request for tonight, meet with staff, you could submit for a rezoning request. I don't think we're going to make you tear down the fence in the meantime or anything like that. We'll work with you on the timeframe, and then you would come before the planning commission and the city council. Uh, probably at this point, we'd be hitting the February meetings. Would that be right? Taylor?
Uh, I think so. We're definitely in cycle. I'm expecting for cycle two right now, so yeah, February meeting.
You, you probably have ninety-five percent of the information you need to submit a rezoning request.
Okay.
Uh, cause you've got your legal description and you've kind of already written a nice narrative of what your intent is, even though that's not necessary for a rezone, but you just come back and see us in February, then we'd send you on to council and, and, and I think that would get you much more in compliance than trying to do a bunch of variances.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I, I, I will tell you that in general speaking, we only approve maybe about five percent of the variance requests that come before us and, and then they're, and those are like true hardship situations. So, and this is probably, doesn't quite meet that requirement, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So, alright. So ultimately, uh, where we stand right now, then we need to conduct a public hearing real quick, so if you would go sit down.
Unless, I was going to say, if he, if, since you just said the word withdraw, you have to withdraw before they deliberate after the public hearing, I believe. But if you're, if you're not wanting to withdraw and just let it play out, then yeah, just move on.
It's up to you. You can withdraw or we can take action on your request. It's. You can withdraw, we can take action on your request, it's, it's no difference.
So I need to withdraw before, before the public hearing, okay.
I, I think, I don't know, we're looking at you, you're the attorney.
If he, it's his application, if he wants to try to, to, we can't force you to withdraw anything, okay? If you tell him you want to withdraw after you have a public hearing...
It just has to be before deliberations.
So be it.
So be it.
Do you want to withdraw it?
Well, you're telling, you're telling me that's the best chance, I would...
Do you want to withdraw?
I would say yes, I would want to withdraw.
So there's withdrawal, so.
Alright, so do we need to conduct the public hearing, sir?
No.
Alright, can I get a motion to, or do we need to do anything at all?
No.
Alright, we will consider your request withdrawn and look forward to seeing you in two months.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, do we have anything for open discussion?
Staff does not have anything at this time.
Alrighty, with that, we will go ahead and close our Board of Zoning Adjustments and pause for just a minute, then we'll move forward with the planning commission.
And we're adjourned, correct?
We're adjourned, yes, I'm sorry. This new thing, thing over here is going to take me a minute to get used to. Alright, let's call to order the City of Bella Vista Planning Commission meeting, call the roll, please.
Ellis?
Here.
Farner?
Here.
Klessen?
Here.
Sedbury?
Here.
Portillo?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Floyd?
Here.
Alright, we do have a quorum. Next on our agenda is our public, our meeting minutes from November the tenth.
Make a motion that be approved as submitted?
Got a motion from Farner?
Second.
Got a second from Sedbury, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, meeting minutes are approved. Next up, we have our public input session. If there's anybody in the public that would like to address the commission concerning any published or non-public item, this will be your only opportunity to do so. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes. Alright, seeing now we'll go ahead and close our public input session. We have nothing under unfinished business. Next up, under new business, we have lot split twenty twenty-five six-one-nine-two-zero, a proposed lot split near Forest Hills Boulevard, Planner Hyatt.
Alright, thank you. Again, this is going back to the property as previously discussed, but located in central Bella Vista, at the corner of Rogers Road and Forest Hills Boulevard. Code section one oh seven dash one-two-six, provided for four options for incidental subdivisions, including lot splits, and the applicant's requesting a lot split of the existing track one, which is roughly twenty acres, to create two new tracks, track one at approximately three-point-seven-three acres and track two at approximately thirteen-point-eight-eight acres. The applicant, again, taking this alongside the large-scale development request for the VA clinic, to be heard later. The subject site is zoned as C-two light commercial, and bulk and area requirements are being met with both tracks per the zoning code. And various drainage and utility easements are being dedicated to the public purvis plat meeting requirements. Minimum road frontage and, or minimum road frontage requirements are also being met for both tracks, and minimum right-of-way dedication requirements have previously been met. No streets are being proposed nor any vacated. However, a twenty-four-foot access easement is being dedicated along the southern edge of track one for future development. And additionally, a six-foot wide access easement is being dedicated along the western side of track one for a proposed sidewalk. The subject site is located within the city's type-two village center node per the future land use map, which plans for a mix of uses that include retail, institution, park, and residential uses. Rogers Road and Forest Hills Boulevard are both classified as major arterials for the master street plan, with Forest Hills also being a state highway. No outstanding technical comments at the time of this report, and due to the analysis above, staff recommends approval of this request.
Alright, any questions for staff? The applicant's present, would you go ahead and come up to the podium? State your name and address for the record, sir.
Sure, I'm Dirk Thibodeau, Swell Consulting, number seven, Halsted Circle, Rogers, Arkansas.
David Irvine, SI Property Investments.
Or anything you'd like to add to staff, report for this one?
No, thank you.
Alright, any questions for that applicant? Alright, if not, can I get a motion to approve lot split twenty twenty-five six-one-nine-two-zero?
Still moved.
Got a motion from Farner?
Second.
Second from Portillo, call the roll, please.
Klessen?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. Alright, that's approved. Next up, we have large-scale twenty twenty-five six-one-nine-one-nine, a proposed large-scale development for the Veterans Affair Medical Clinic near Forest Hills Boulevard and Rogers Road, Planner LaRue.
Alright, so the applicant is requesting to build a sixteen-thousand-seven-hundred-foot, square-foot VA medical clinic at Rogers Road and Forest Hills. The future land use plan does include the site as a type-two village center with access from both street fronts. Seventy-seven total parking spaces are provided, ten of those which are ADA compliant. Both, both streets are classified as major arterials that experience moderate to heavy traffic, however, are not expected to generate over one hundred peak trips per hour. As mentioned, there is a new sidewalk proposed along both street fronts with a dedicated access easement provided along Forest Hills. There are still some outstanding comments from planning, engineering, water, and fire. I did provide you with the, the latest email we have for the intent for Centerton to connect to water. I believe they have to conduct a hydraulic analysis to be able to complete that. With those outstanding comments, there was no public comment, and staff is recommending approval so long as the remaining comments are met. I'd be happy to provide those comments too, if you'd like.
Any questions for staff? You got any issues with the comments that are still outstanding?
Not at all, in fact, I've already made the changes, they're corrected, they, we just haven't re-submitted them back to staff, so.
Okay, and then what about the ongoing water discussion? You knew it was going to get asked.
That's actually been committed to by both parties. So, so we've spoken with Ethan Hunter at the Runway Group. They've committed to being willing to allow the property to be brought into the POA. Charlie Holt has committed to providing fire suppression water and domestic contingent on Centerton's release for domestic if they chose to do that. So currently, it'll be brought into the POA. Charlie will provide fire suppression. We're waiting for Centerton's commitment or decision on whether they prefer to keep the service area for domestic purposes or whether they're willing to give that to the POA. Ethan had asked us, or suggested, would be a better word, that we actually not submit for the POA approval or, or entrance into the POA until the lot split was approved. So that's the reason why there's sort of a horse and buggy and back and forth, which should have come, or should come first, but both have been committed to, both parties have committed to assisting the VA in getting services. I, I don't think there's any question whatsoever of accessibility to the water. The question is, at the end of the day, POA's going to provide fire, and who will provide domestic water is not yet finalized.
Yeah, along Forest Hills, we have the luxury of having two mains. So we have a Centerton main that is not capable of handling fire, and then we have the POA, which is capable of handling both, if Centerton chooses not for us to tap.
Somehow there's going to be water there, we're just not sure.
There's no question. There's water, yeah. The question is, who, who's, who's sending the bill, so.
Gotcha, okay. Any other questions for the applicant? The only other, the only other thing we got on there is just updating the landscape plan for the Board of Zoning Adjustments. Will be added on there, so.
We're good.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve large-scale twenty twenty-five six-one-nine-one-nine with outstanding staff comments and corrections from the Board of Zoning Adjustments?
Still moved.
Got a motion from Sedbury?
Second.
Second from Klessen, call the roll, please.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. Alright, your large scale is approved, staff will get with you on the next steps.
Appreciate it, yes.
Thank you. Alright, that closes our new business. Do we have anything for committee reports?
None at this time.
How about open discussion?
Just an FYI, you guys didn't need to vote, there's nothing too crazy for twenty twenty-six, believe it or not. We don't have several holiday conflicts like we did with this year. But you will see cycle one, which was already approved via the twenty twenty-five calendar, because we always approve cycles one and two of the prior, or the next year with the prior year. The work session was supposed to be on New Year's Day, so we're, that you guys voted to cancel that, so we're not having a work session for the next cycle, so just, just similar to what we did now, only be a regular meeting. And with that, the actual cycles are for twenty twenty-six, following the, the two that you've already approved. Everything else is just as normal, forty-two day cycle, second Monday is at four-thirty. Your planning commission work sessions are ten days before those. Other than that, this is really just an informational heads-up for you guys.
I got one question.
Okay.
The work session for next December is on the thirty-first, this New Year's Eve.
Yeah.
Would you guys like to cancel that one?
Yeah.
We're open on that day, so we left it.
We're going to do this right. So can I get a motion to cancel the work session planned for December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six?
Still moved.
Got a motion from Klessen?
Second.
Second from Portillo? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we have canceled the work session for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Anything else?
That's it.
Do you need us to take action on this calendar?
No, no, that was, I needed that though, I was going to...
Alright, the calendar's in keeping with our stuff, so, with our, whatever it is, our, our rules. So anyways, alright, anything else for open discussion?
Not from staff.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, the city council work session will be tonight at five-thirty PM across the hallway at the police, police training room at five-thirty, with the regular meeting on Monday, December fifteenth at six PM. Our next work session has been canceled due to the holiday, and our next regular meeting, our next Board of Zoning Adjustments is scheduled for Monday, January the twelfth, with the planning commission directly after that. With that, we stand adjourned, thank you.
Merry Christmas, Deborah.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas. And a happy new year.